We'll get started with, uh, directly August 4th, 6 o'clock, Franklin County Justice. So, appreciate all of you being here tonight. And we look forward to taking care of some business and contributions that you want to add to that business. Colvin Street, Doran, I as Commissioner of Franklin, the people's identification and please, uh, praise. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we praise you for another day. God, and I pray that you bless this board, encourage this board, God. God, it will do things to please into you, God, and then this county, God. God, we leave everything in your hands, God, that you tell us and encourage us what to do. God, and we give you the praise and glory for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Praise to the nations, to the like of the United States of America, and to the brother of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll start off with public comments. And I ask Judge Emerson, if you'll stand up, I believe you've got a public comment for us.
Yes, Chairman, the Historical Society wanted me to announce that they're going to have an open house on September the 14th, that is Sunday, from 2 to 4. That is their regular meeting day. They meet every second Sunday of the month in the afternoon. But that Sunday in September, they're going to have an open house at the downstairs, below the Commissioners' office, where their material and stuff are housed. We have a bunch of great volunteers. I'm not going to start naming them because I'll leave one of them out, and they do a great job for us. They're open a couple of days during the week, and there's someone always there to help folks in genealogy and other matters when they're researching. But they want to, they're going to, they're supposed to send something to the paper and let the paper know. And, but they just wanted me to announce that it's one of the Commissioners' meeting, make you aware of it. They'd like to hear.
You ever said that again?
September the 14th, from 2 to 4.
September the 14th, from 2 to 4. They want to keep that in mind. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Got any other, other comment? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and do two things tonight. First, I wanted to thank y'all for the opportunity that I've had to, to serve as the County Manager here in Franklin County. One of the things that, when Ralph Fudgeon's told me that he didn't want to run for the Senate anymore and wanted to run for Insurance Commissioner, I couldn't sleep that night. I don't mind telling you, said they tossed and turned, talked to a lot of folks, and did a lot of soul searching. They, when I made the decision that I wanted to run for the Georgia Senate, I came to y'all as a group, and some of y'all were there, and they, I know, I can remember, Commissioner Dykes, you told me, you said, Frank, if you get elected, you won't, you won't just help Franklin County, you'll help all local governments all over the state. And they, I tried to do that. Said they, I've been very fortunate since I've been in the Senate, said they, you know, we, we don't know what God's got in store for us and what life has to hold. One of the things that is pretty difficult for me to stand here before you tonight, because the, about the same time, five years ago, I came down the driveway and found my son killed in our driveway. And without the faith, the friends and the good Lord upstairs taking care of me, said I'm not sure that I would have been able to make it through that crisis. Said I know there's more than one of us that has felt that pain, loss of a loved one, loss of a son. The, and I wanted to thank y'all for giving me the faith to serve y'all and serve the citizens of Georgia and the Georgia Senate, because tonight's the five year anniversary of my son's death. And for that, said the, it's been a hundred, a privilege, and I, I know that I'd come back to you and hope that we can continue to move the state, move our communities forward. They ask for your blessings and your faith in doing that. And I wanted to thank y'all for allowing me the opportunity to serve as a County Manager for 10 years, and what it means for me to serve each of y'all in our Georgia Legislature. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator. We certainly appreciate you and what you do, represent our county and the districts that you serve, and we appreciate you in every respect. Appreciate you being here tonight. Any other public, other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most people know about Rice Mill Road because they've seen me around for seven years. And 20 years when I moved up there, Sam, Delrod, Fox, and all these fellows in charge of the program, they said, well, it's going to take 10 years to get this road to being. There ain't no way. Frank Yen came on board, I said, Frank, what else do I have to do? Done this, this, and this, and this. He said, that's it, we'll be out there tomorrow and get it straight away. So he moved with compassion and hurriedness. Well, eight years later, our million dollar road is beginning to get torn up, the roots growing underneath the tree, underneath the road. And this is actual photographs of it. I wanted to put that on the agenda to see what we can do about getting some of these things straight away, because a million dollars is a million dollar road with two bridges and good, good turnoff. And so I want to bring that to your attention to see if we could get with the County Manager and get some of the patchwork done, because it's deteriorating pretty doggone quickly, especially with the roots growing underneath this million dollar construction. And then, it's a shortcut, they sure know where it is, everybody knows where Rice Mill is. We've got about 13, 18 wheelers and dump trucks go up and down that street and begin to deteriorate and tear up. So we asked old John to put up two truck signs, and he came out the next day and did it, along with 45 speed. So John appreciates you sending up those truck signs, but they keep coming down the road. So Judy and I, since TruJ, have a 345. We sit out there, and how did you say that?
I think it was 347.
Oh, yeah, you gave that to me. I'm really good. Uh, Judy and I tried to catch one of those trucks. Ain't no way. I mean, those fellows got heavy foot on chicken, chicken trucks. And we tried to catch it, but 55 or 60 miles an hour around the bend, you know, it's no good. But we sat out there several times and stopped a couple of big dump trucks to travel, to dirt, and things like this. So we caught up with one fella, and being nice, like I am, I went up to him, I said, what's the possibility of taking another shortcut of having nine kids on the shrive? And if one of them get hurt or killed, it's going to be the son of a pet. So he must have been a Christian, because he said, we pay the damn taxes and we'll continue to use this damn road until Jesus comes back. So that tells you right quick that he was a Christian. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, if we could get, if you like that, if we could get someone, sure, Steve Bill there, to send a patrol car out there so often and keep down the drapes. So whatever, John, you can do. John did all he could do, the guy's too much, fast with trucks, you know, with the X and it says, you know, don't come this way.
Did you give us tag?
No, it didn't have a tag. A lot of the trucks don't have a tag in this county. Isn't that amazing? So, you know, put that on the agenda there, Mr. Chairman, if you would. Anyway, so we've got, we now have six, two school children who live on this Rice Mill Road. Was now, now it's 96, but it's something that we can do. Plus the fact, you know, Frank Yen was out there fixing it, sign sealed, delivered. Eight years later, you can see the results of this. And that's the, that's the 45 miles, and this, behind that 45 mile an hour is John's sign on the big truck. And then, all, the next question, I end of that sentence, next paragraph. John puts the status on striping, because I talked to Todd McDuffie, he said, the sign sealed, delivered, money will see there, and what can we do about it? There's some photographs, you can see the striping on this, just by the stop. And I realize we're down on the list.
Right. We've actually had, we're just wrapping up our second, what DOT calls their Off-System Safety Project. Which for us includes primarily striping and roadway signage. That project is very near completion. Now, we're actually partnering with the City of Boyston for a third project. And I talked with Todd McDuffie and with representative from the DOT last week, and they are finishing up our application for that project. So we were told that we will receive funding for that project.
Well, Jeff, can you tell me if we already had the money for that striping?
For the first and the second projects, not the third one.
Right.
So it depends on if your road is on, which is on the first or the last.
And Rice Mill will actually be in the third project, not in, in Project One or Project Two.
Because they didn't want to give us some documentation as how it's, how it's looking, you know, if there's something about some more patchwork or something like this. I realize we're down on the list with all these other roads you've got going, but I feel like since we've already spent a million dollars on this particular road, they are kind of maintained. And it's designed for buses, and, I mean, we love the buses, they do a great job for the kids. And it's designed for vehicles, not for the 18 wheelers and these big dump trucks. So I don't know whether you want to...
Can speed breakers be put on that road?
Uh, we have a fellow here in the green shirt says, no.
I haven't said that, but I would not recommend it.
Yeah.
That's slow, that might be terrible.
So I don't know, Mr. Chairman, what the board is on not only patching up or putting the speed breakers or taking care of the roots that's sliding underneath there, and then striping this. I should not have forgotten about you there, Charlie. So other than that, that's all complaints, not complaints, just invigoration.
What I would say, Wood, is you need to get with your Commissioner, your district, make sure he gets that road on that list, is what I would recommend.
So he's sworn in in November.
That one, he recommends you down.
Okay, it's on the list. Right, it's on the striping list.
It's on the striping list.
I don't like the other list, though, too, because you're talking about...
Anyway, I'll turn that challenge over to you and see what we can work out.
I've got a copy of the list, we'd like to look at it all in the journal.
Okay.
Just thank you, Wood.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Appreciate those comments, sir. We have very capable staff that's addressing these issues as rapidly as possible, and we really appreciate you bringing that to attention. All right, any other public comments? Okay, don't have any other public comments. This group, first thing on the agenda tonight is the True Vista Property Donation, and we're starting to appreciate them being here tonight, and I will turn it over to our manager, Ms. Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we are delighted to have several representatives from True Vista Communications with us tonight, and I will introduce David Brunt, and I will allow him to introduce the rest of the folks that he has. But we're very pleased, back several years ago, when Senator Yen was our County Manager, we started trying to identify some properties that would allow us to actually erect an additional water storage tank. And we identified a site in an area of the county where, at the time, I think it was Northland Cable owned property. Since then, True Vista is the owner, and they have been gracious enough to be willing to donate that 4A retract to Franklin County. And it works out as far as, we have an existing 12-inch water line on State Route 51 there. The elevation works out and will be a very valuable piece of property to us in the future as far as the expansion of our water system. But at this time, I'll introduce David Brunt, and he has the paperwork that has been reviewed by our attorney, everything's good to go as far as this dedication of property.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate that. I'm David Brunt, I'm the Senior Vice President of Operations and CFO. I have Allison J. Bisi, one of my peers, she is also Senior Vice President of Marketing Sales. And then I have Clay Fisher, who I think some of you know, he is a local fellow from Stevens County, he is our Director of Retail Operations for the area. And then Dennis Leford, who is our Sales Executive here in town for the area, and then the Sales Director, Dennis' manager, is Patricia Joyner. I do have some paperwork that we'd like to execute. Chairman Bridges, if I could, I need to get your signature on here. And if I could just say a couple of words, you know, having grown up in the great state of Georgia, I took a lot of pride when we bought, when we bought this property. It is, it is, I really love this state. I moved seven years ago to go to work for True Vista, and it is, you know, it is heartfelt to come back home. We are so pleased to present this property to Franklin County. We hope this shows True Vista's commitment to helping y'all move forward and to helping economic development in this great county. So with that, if we could... So let me get, we'll sign a couple pieces of paper. If we could get the notary to sign this as well, that would be great.
Phil, didn't with True Vista also, where we changed over to, didn't that save us about maybe seven or eight thousand dollars a year on our cost?
It's actually about 12,000, because we converted over totally.
Well, I know it was a substantial savings over a period, and we actually...
I'd get you a sign here, if you want to. I'd be grateful. Actually, I want to give y'all his name, print his name.
Fourteen years is a hundred thousand dollars.
Appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen. You can just have that show. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Appreciate you. See you later.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask you, you, you County Manager?
We certainly appreciate True Vista, working with the county, and we certainly appreciate this donation, and certainly will add for future growth of Franklin County's roads, valuable face of progress. We certainly appreciate that.
Can I ask, John, while, you know, with the thing we was talking about with True Vista, about, you know, we've asked people about us being with our Commissioners' meeting, is there any, do we know anything about that as far as being on the cable, as far as with the Commissioners being televised on the cable? Do we know anything?
Yeah, plus it's on YouTube.
Okay. Yeah, neither's YouTube, but still, no, thank you.
And if you have any questions, that is part of my group, so I'm happy to answer any questions you have about anything televised, we'll be glad to move up.
Can I get your number?
Yes, true. It's 803-379-6700. And I'm Allison J. Bisi.
So what'd you say, eight what was the first three?
803.
803, okay. Cause any partners like 864.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, we really appreciate it. Win-win situation for all of us.
We want to all move forward, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry to take one of those times.
Thanks again. Good, appreciate it. We appreciate it. See you guys. Thank you. And it's moved to the Joint Development Authority to fund it. We have Ben Adams for us tonight.
Yes, gentlemen, thank you. Thanks for allowing me to be here. I'm actually here, as you know, on behalf of the Joint Development Authority. The Joint Development Authority was formed in 1997, and since that time, and it was formed for the purposes of creating the Gateway Joint Development Authority. Since that time, however, it's been a very active Joint Development Authority. We're one of the smaller ones in the state, but one of the, I have to say, better known in the state. Mainly because of our cooperation and all the work and different things that we've been able to accomplish. When we first established, and I, this was before my time, but as part of the establishment, each county, and this is Franklin, Hart, and Stevens, committed money to the funding of the operations for the Joint Development Authority. And periodically after that, as the funds would get low, they would come back to each of the Board of Commissioners and ask for additional funds. It was usually $5,000 or so, about every two to three years. And with different fiscal years, for different counties, et cetera, it was difficult sometimes for a county to weave that in once they've made their budget and et cetera. So this past year, the decision was made to ask the Commissioners in each county to make this a part of their budget, a line item on their budget, so they could plan for it, and, and it would be something that the Joint Development Authority could plan on as well. It was a win, it would be a win-win to do it that way. So, operating expenses include, in this case, what they're asking each county is $3,500 on an annual basis. And it includes covering the annual audit, which is legally something that they have to do, and other operating expenses for managing the fiscal accounts that are part of the different grants and loans that are requested through our Joint Development Authority. So for instance, this authority has done projects in all of our counties. They've done a rail project in Hart County for quality industries. We did a canopy project and participated in that jointly for revitalization in the Toccoa area. The mega ramps in each of the counties and fishing piers in each, Stevens County, I think, got most of the fishing pier. Those were done, there were requests for funds that were handled through the Joint Development Authority. Our road that we did and put in for the Tyco Regional Medical Center was a Joint Development Authority request. One of the reasons that we do that, of course, is that we think that whatever we do for one is going to help all three counties, and that is almost always true. The other thing is that the funding for a Joint Development Authority, you can request up to $500,000. If you're requesting it as a single county, you can only request up to $200,000. And so not only does it give us the extra cloud of working together, it also gives us in addition, the opportunity for additional funds. So what I'm asking tonight is that you add to your annual budget $3,500 as a line item in support of the work of the Joint Development Authority.
Thank you, Ms. Ann.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioners, do y'all have any questions?
I've got one, Lynn. Was, I was thinking that it was the $3,500, and you were asking for $1,500 from each.
Initially, about two years ago, the request was made for $1,500 initially, and I think it actually, I thought it had come to Board of Commissioners at that time, but I don't, it did not materialize, so I'm not sure how that worked. And since that time, the audit, we've added the audit to it, because that audit is an annual process and an annual cost that needed to be included. So they added $2,000 per county for that. That's a $6,000 audit that they're doing on these funds, et cetera, that they're operating.
Did you have time from our conversation today to find out if it is put out for bid each year?
I did not, I did not.
I'm asking if you would do that, just to see...
I would do that, and I will get back to each other, I'd like to know.
Could we get a copy of the audit before maybe next meeting?
You actually, you receive a copy every year. This year, the audit was late. You have, you have received, because I know I have personally delivered a copy of that audit every year. This year, the audit was late. I have a copy, I have not delivered it yet, but I will be happy to, and I should have thought about bringing it up tonight, but I didn't.
That'd be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Anderson, any other questions?
Do you know what firm does the audit?
It's on the audit. Sorry, I can't tell you right offhand, we, there was a, it was being done by a gentleman in Hartwell who, he came here, and, and another company is doing it now, and for what, I just, I can't recall, but it is on that documentation.
I understand that we don't have any evidence for the Commissioners have contributed in the past this amount of 1,500. Is that been a annual thing that the Commissioners?
No, what we, at the time, it was about, it was about two years ago that we decided to try and, and to ask for the annual versus going randomly. And when Billy Morris was here, we made that request. I thought that it had been brought before the Board of Commissioners, I was not there personally, but I thought that it had been done, and I thought that it was approved. But it did not, it didn't happen, it wasn't issued, and so somewhere in there, something got lost. So we're coming back now and saying, in addition to that 1,500 we originally asked for, we're adding 2,000 to it to cover the audit for a total of 3,500 a year. The other two counties have already approved it and put it into their budget.
We appreciate it very much.
All right, and I'll get that to you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, yes, we're willing to, stitching, County's stitching update and funding, with the best interest, if you please come up and tell us what you've got on your mind.
Well, a couple things I'd like to share with you. First off, I'd like to tell you what I've been doing the last two months, since I last met with you. A lot of my time has been spent, you know, out and about the county, doing everything from water samples to chicken litter samples, to consulting with families that are inheriting farms, that they, may have inherited from their families and don't really understand the best opportunities to take advantage of that land. So that's what I've spent a lot of my time doing. Because after yesterday, I made seven site visits, and that's a really busy Monday, but the visits just worked out where I got to one farm to take a water sample, and there were three other farmers there waiting on me, said, we didn't know how to get in touch with you over the weekend, and will you follow us to our place next? So luckily, I had the stuff in the car to do that, and was able to meet that need. We've done a lot of bacterial water testing for people's wells, for safety sake, as well as spent some time doing that for some of our poultry farmers, to help maybe increase their yields as far as their birds go. And so that's what, a great deal of my time has been spent doing. And wanted to share that with y'all, because y'all do, of course, provide funding for the program, and I wanted to let you know the kind of, some of the things I have been doing in order to, you know, make this, our extension the best it could possibly be. Now, with that, I've spent also a lot of time with the University of Georgia, being trained immensely so that I could better serve. So with that, as far as the funding requests that I'm here to talk with you about just a little bit, part of that comes back to, and I've got some just information here, nothing, well, it can be a little confusing, some of it that you already have, I just wanted to make it readily available for you, and kind of give you the breakdown of some of that information. The first page there is the current county budget, as far as where the Extension Office goes, and I have, later on, I have the breakdown of how that relates to the Board of Education's contributions. But if you'll look with me down there on the line out there that says travel, is my understanding that the Board of Commissioners decided to do a $4,000 travel allowance for my position? And as you can see, down here, there was already $1,563 in there for last year. That 1,563 goes to provide the funding for Audrey Justice for the 4A programs. I mean, you know, she spends a lot of days in our school systems, working, working with the kids, and she does get a portion of that travel from the school system, and that's also on the later document. We've had, so that was the increase, was the $2,437 there to increase the travel from 1,563 up to 4,000. There was also a 54 cent increase in the Social Security and tax bracket, which is irrelevant, but I was trying to figure out where the other 54 cents came from. The next page in our document there is the county verification of county salary, kind of gives the breakdown there of my salary, the retirement, Social Security, and then the county travel allowance there of $4,000. It was signed by Bobby Smith, who was our county extension, our interim county extension coordinator. Bobby will be handing that rollover to me effective September 1st officially. I've been working with Bobby to get into that job, but I will officially be the county extension coordinator September 1st. And then I don't know if that's John's signature, or that's John's signature. I didn't know whose signature it was, I was just...
Thank you, Ray.
Well, it's kind of like my signature, you can't always understand it. The next several documents here, one of them is the County Funds Voucher for the... And then the next line there is, or the next page there, rather, is where it's broken down by staff member. Then we move on to the Board of Ed's portion, just so you can see it. Demonstration of materials there, that's six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And what happens there is the Board of Education budgets a certain amount, and then once y'all invoice them, and they cut you the check for the nineteen thousand eight hundred, and I believe it's twenty-two dollars, they have a certain allotment, and that money comes to us in the form of supply money that comes into the office, and that is my responsibility to manage and make sure that we use that in the correct manner. You can also see the nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, that's the Board of Education's contribution to the salary for the 4H assistant. Next page, kind of same thing, is a breakdown per staff member. That next page is the invoice that the Board of Commissioners sent to the Board of Education in the amount of nineteen hundred, or nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. It shows where it was paid in September of last year. The final page in our document here kind of gives another breakdown, so you can see them side by side, the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education's contributions to each individual position as it relates to salary, teacher retirement, Social Security, and then travel. With that, my request would be for actually a forty-three hundred dollar increase, is the way I'm presenting it initially, and we do all the part of that. Two hundred and thirty-seven dollars would go to Audrey Justice for an increase of travel, take her to eighteen hundred, or, yeah, eighteen hundred dollars a year in travel to help defer some of her costs going to club meetings and other events throughout the county that she has to go to as a part of her responsibilities. As many of you know, Audrey is a part-time employee. She works twenty-nine hours with us and spends a lot of that time and then some. I keep sort of working, getting paid twenty-nine hours and working for her. So that would be that. The increase to get me to the original discussed four thousand, an increase of fifteen hundred and sixty-three dollars. And then the last item would be an out-of-county travel budget that would cover things like trips to Perry with students, trips to Moultrie with producers, programs that are not currently offered within the county, but that would act as more of a reimbursement type fund if that's something that we can find a way to do. And I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Pitt, Richard? Thank you, sir.
All right.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome to part of the county here.
Now, right now, you're using your vehicle to ride.
Yes, I'm currently using my vehicle. I alternate between my truck and my wife's old SUV to, of course, save fuel. On days that I need the truck, obviously drive the truck. If I don't need the truck, you won't see me in the truck too much because it is a gas hog. And last month, I've got those notes here, too. In the month of July, I drove a thousand sixty-one miles. And in August to date, I've driven nine hundred and sixty miles. So, you know, using personal vehicle, and if we figured a mileage rate of fifty-six and a half, I think that's what the university gives me when I go in university business, it came out to be right at six hundred dollars for last month. Obviously, that's going to change greatly from month to month, and that's why when John and I discussed it, the four hundred dollars, four thousand dollars divided out gives you three hundred and thirty-three dollars roughly, and carry that all year to give you more of an average, because there's going to be times of the year I'm going to do more site visits. The month of December, I'm probably going to do the least amount of site visits because the office is only open for three weeks in December. So when you look at those types of things, it's better to get an average, because if I turned in the mileage to you every month, that mileage fund would probably be going about October of the year. So that way, it kind of gives me a budget. Yes, ruts it out.
It's something assist you with the expenses.
It assists with some of the expenses that have been incurred. If you go from, for example, yesterday, I went from some farms over near Broad River Church Road, went from there to a farm in Bald Springs. There's a lot of miles between that side of Carnsville and then the other side of Carnsville, and those miles add up, and it hurt. So it's just something to assist and defer some of the costs that's occurred for doing the job and trying to do the job well.
I remember when Ricky became for, I remember he asked for a truck, which I think was about twenty-seven thousand, and I think that, didn't we look at seeing if we had a vehicle in our fleet already? Do you recall?
I know Raymond and I have talked several times about the possibility of finding something. I don't know that we have anything that's available today that would be adequate for the need, certainly as we look at trying to move some vehicles around and get some better suited vehicles for some particular applications, that possibility is there. I don't think that we have anything today that we could say that we could turn over.
Well, no, this was eighteen months ago, or fifteen, thirteen months ago.
Yeah, and y'all may have talked about that then. I wasn't a part of that.
Yeah, Billy was, yeah.
Right.
But can you check and see if we have any trucks in the fleet that could be used, just since we already have insurance on them?
Well, I can tell you that we don't have anything today that we could turn over, but certainly be glad to try and find that. And Raymond and I, like I say, have talked about that a couple of occasions, that we'd like to try to find something.
So what we're saying is your request would fix you temporarily, and then in next year's budget, you might be able to look at a vehicle.
This would take care of me until we get to that point. And then how it would alter my budget request for travel is going to depend on, obviously, the type of truck. And then we're going to look at line items or how it's going to provide fuel. And you and I had talked about maybe an S-ten or a smaller truck to run around in on a daily basis, and then use my larger truck, what is required for transporting livestock and that sort of thing. And so my, this request would carry me through until we got to budget time next year and can start making a decision that we can have some forethought to, because the issue really boils down to, when we were doing all the budget planning, I wasn't in the office. And so we're, I come in July one with the budget finalized, so we've got to kind of make do with what we've got. And so what I'm requesting is an amendment to that to take care of the program through the next year until we get to budget time.
John, when we did our budget, didn't the state look over the Extension Agent's budget?
They did.
We were in line with everything but the travel, and they suggested four thousand dollars for the travel. Is that correct?
They did, and what, my understanding at the time was our salary was competitive for the position. They felt like we were a little low on the travel allowance, so they recommended the four thousand.
What, with two thousand dollars or something like that?
We were at fifteen hundred.
So this is a significant increase in travel.
And they had suggested to us four thousand dollars would make us more competitive as far as the travel.
Right, that's what I thought.
Now, I guess one thing that I did not realize at the time was, was that a portion of that travel was already being used by the 4H program assistant as far as the travel allowance. But we used the numbers that the state was giving to us.
And that was only fifteen hundred, though, right?
That is correct.
And not the additional four thousand.
Not the additional four thousand, correct.
And to add to that, what we've got is that fifteen hundred was already designated, and instead of, because there was no travel for the agent's position, and that goes back several years ago when it was moved into salary to make a retirement fund increase. And so there was no travel for that, and so the fifteen hundred, the fifteen sixty-three that's currently there is there for Audrey's travel, so that left me with a balance of the two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And so you divide that out over twelve months, it's two hundred and three dollars and some change every month for fuel.
And I think if I'm not mistaken with that, then basically, that's why Ricky just drove his own truck, whatever, because he got that in his salary, if I'm not mistaken.
And you may very well be correct.
I'm thinking we could ask him if I would make sure.
How often is the van used for the 4H program, Raymond? Is it?
It's going to vary. During the summer, they use it a lot more. She's going to use it, and we've been, Audrey was never in on the budgeting process prior. She did not realize that there is a cap for that on fuel. We have a seven hundred and fifty dollar budget for fuel. So we're trying to be mindful of how often we do use it, because when she takes it to Rock Eagle and back, that's tank of fuel. And so we try to limit it to around once a month in order to be mindful of our budget. And so we try to use it about once a month, because it does drink a lot of gas, and, you know, we try to use it to send kids up and down the road, and that's really the only time it's used. It's not used just to drive around, it's used for transporting students.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is employee handbook that we've been working on now for several months. Elaine, I understand that you cannot talk very well tonight. Sorry about your voice and your sore throat and so forth. Commissioners, you do have the, I guess you could say the draft of this employee handbook. You've had it now for a while, and hopefully you've read it. I would ask, commissioners, y'all have any questions about the handbook?
Not this time, Mr. Chairman. The questions that I had in proposed changes were included in the most recent draft that was published.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just ask, since Steve's here, can you tell me what you think about handbook, Steve?
I agree.
Okay. Can we go get Steve to get a copy of that so we can review?
Oh, really? I mean, all the constitutional officers, I think, would need to have an opportunity to review it, because, I mean, it forms the basis of all personnel-related administration, employee compensation, insurance, the whole gamut.
I think we need to make sure, we need to get all the constitutional officers a copy, and then, I think, before we make any action, I think we'd like to get together with them to get their input as well.
Yeah, I would actually suggest, and was going to, that maybe even department heads have the opportunity to, anybody that's going to be doing performance evaluations or personnel administration or otherwise, I think it would be great for them to have the opportunity and, you know, take a look and make comments.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Elaine, but I think, I think the, I think it's been...
I know we were supposed to have it. It sounds like right now, from what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Have you sent that email?
Yeah.
I remember it wasn't until recently since we got this new brief, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions about the handbook, gentlemen? It sounded like we may want to delay this one month.
I think that would be a good thing.
Acting on it.
I want to make sure that everybody's had an opportunity to evaluate what you did and provide comments, concerns. I'd rather deal with it now than even consider going back and making changes.
Make sure that Sheriff's Department and all the other constitutional officers.
I mean, we spent twenty-five hundred dollars on getting this. Is that not correct with the...
Certainly, certainly needed updating. It was certainly obsolete, outdated. We appreciate your hard work on it, Elaine, doing that. So commissioners, if y'all object that we deal this in October.
No objection.
No objection, then we'll put it on the October agenda, and that will give everyone an opportunity to give their input, because I'm like Commissioner Strickland here, I want everybody aboard, because it is a employee's handbook. That means everybody, no matter what department or branch you're working for, for Sheriff's Department or other constitutional officers, so employee, so we'll still deal with that. Any other questions about the handbook? Next thing on our list here is the executive session, and we want to deal primarily solely with real estate and personnel during this executive session. So that would call for us to go into executive session. Does that call for both going to executive session?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Strickland makes that motion. Second, Mr. Jakes. All in favor going into executive session, signify with your right hand, please. Okay, we'll go into executive session if y'all excuse us. Appreciate it.